Hi, I... I once again forgot to, uh, change the autofocus. Dammit! Uh... Jacob, why, why would you, why would you do this? Well, that is fine though. So... Welcome to yet another of these Blazblue streams, where we are gonna do the same thing we did last time. Uh, Blazblue is a very interesting game, with a lot of characters. Uh, and last time what we did was, uh, if I just go here, we started working on this document and going through... Uh, we started out with, uh, Ragnar and going through all of the special moves and distortion drives and stuff. Uh, realized that took like 20 minutes to do for one character, so we shouldn't do that for everyone, and just like went through the tutorials and like, what are the drives, what is Arakune? Curses people, summons insects, bang! Has weird, four weird things that he like uses, he has different like D-moves and then they buff him and when he has all four and he's over, no, overdrive lets him like TP around, it's very wild, but he gets an extra distortion drive. Carl Clover has, uh, a doll that he can control. Hakomin has weird counters and weird meter stuff. Hasama has the chains he can use. Iron Takeoff magnetizes people. Jhin freezes people. Elighty has the staff she uses. Noel, uh, has the chain revolver. Uh, yeah, okay, now I have done Noel then, yeah. And Rachel does wind stuff, that's just incredibly wild. Ragnar against health. So Kaka has the dancing edge thing that like does weird movement and can summonly clone with the overdrive. Zubaki has the weird EX moves. Um... And Nu13 has the sword projectile summoning. Okay, okay, we remember what these things are, good. That's again, quick litmus test for me if I am still able to do this. Excellent, well then let's get Blazblue in. We also have DustLooop open, cuz DustLooop is a great resource. I like DustLooop a lot, uh, I'm quickly gonna go into booth and turn off some timers, um... There's no need for us to, uh, shield, uh, Damascus actively anymore, I love Damascus, like... But I don't need a timer to consistently shield for him, uh, at all times. And that is off now, good. And we should also boot up the Blazblue. And Blazblue is booting. Excellent. So we're just gonna pick off, uh, with the drives and the direction that we already were going in. And then, when we finish that, we will start during the specials, and then I'll probably do stream through it like these four characters and that is the goal, and maybe go for one extra or something. Um... Yep... BBCF is going! Excellent! Okay, that notification was just my phone being like, "You can control your Twitch stream from your phone!" Actor specifics. Uh... We finished with... Hasama, right? Yeah, we finished with Hasama. Then we got Mu! Mu, no, Me. Me is the way you pronounce that, Me, uh, no, wolf. Mu's drive ability is called Stein's Gunner. This sets cannons around the screen that fire lasers. When the D-button is held before setting cannon, enhances the laser's fight with increased range and damage. Okay, up to four cannons screen, once there are four on screen, the oldest one will disappear. Uh, oh, so different abilities also use, uh, cannons. Oh boy! Okay, that's, that's red. Overdrive, Stein's Gazer. Okay... Okay, that just increases the fire rate, cancel middle stuff fine instead. Oh, so you don't need to uh, charge them to send, so you can just... Okay, yeah, that's wild. Okay, that's, yeah, that's, uh... That's kind of cool. Uh... Yeah, let's go down here so we can see Mu. Oh god, we should also how the game actually spells the name, we could just... Heh heh, we can just copy what this thing did here. Uh... Mu should be before, uh, Nu. Uh, Mu Greek letter. Uh, it is pronounced Mu, yeah, yeah, yeah. Wait, these are Noel? Let's just, uh, drive Stein's Gunner. Uh... Yeah. Drive Stein's Gazer. Uh, yeah, no, it's Stein's, right? Yeah. Uh... You fold. That's about it. Good! Oh my god, don't need to plug it in. Now... Nu, that's Mu. Makoto. Um... What? That's a small top. Okay, called Impact. Holding the D-button charges up energy and releasing the button attacks. Impact effect not only normal attacks, but also special attacks deduced, okay, yeah. Continuing to hold the D-button causes an impact gauge to appear over the heat gauge. The impact gauge has three levels, increasing from 1 to 2 to 3. Once the gauge reaches magic, it's increased from 3 to 1. The 1-2 can be cancelled in the special attacks, considering like normal attacks. The 3 can be cancelled but exchanged, it has higher power and boosts the enemy far away. Uh, okay... Oh! It's like a quick time event? That's... I, I, we, we ain't playing neutral masters today! Nope. Oh! Holy shit, yeah! Ho! No, that actua- yeah! That actually, I hate that that makes sense. It's literally a golf minigame, fuck! That does seem like hell to play. Galaxian. Wha- the overdrive, uh, the impact gauge will remain at level G. So, what is G? Oh, ho, ho! Don't scare me like that, don't scare me like that, that's near. Do, oh! I, oh! I don't wanna do this on the layer. Okay, level G is more powerful than level 3, okay, that, that makes sense. Normal D-attacks have more impact than level 3 and can be specially cancelled. Can add extra damage after hitting issue working. What the f- Heh, 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 he laughed at his G! Okay, no, I, I wanna see if I can do this. Okay, 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 we can do this. The game really cocked me like that, okay. She's, that's a weird ass ability! Okay, uh, let's get to... What was her name? Heh heh, dammit Jacob! The, the only... Heh heh, uh, we, we'll find it if we just look. Heh, heh, Makoto! Why, why is she a squir- squirrel? Sorry, what the fuck is asteroid vision? Okay, a comment dash kind of thing, okay, okay. Oh, come... Man, that's wild, uh... Okay... Boy... Drive, is, is it just called Impact? Like the font, thank you. Please tell me I have Impact on here. Yes! Yes! Heh 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 heh! Yes! Heh heh heh! Oh, it's, heh heh, maybe I could do that! Heh 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 heh! How do would you... Makot... Okay, you would have no pressure for that, okay! Uh, overdrive. That's the one that's called something Galaxian, right? Galax- Um... Good, ex- That's about it, she's relatively simple character, but I, I imagine actually doing like good execution with her will be incredibly hard. Good. Next one. Valkenhein. I played against a Valkenhein, this fucker turns into a wolf thing! It's fucked up! I swear to god if that isn't his drive and that's just like a weird special move, okay, okay, thank god, that is his drive, it's c- Okay, sorry, look at the goddamn, uh, gauge down here? That is so cute! Okay, yes! Oh, he can guard while a wolf, okay! But his movement speed increased, also be aware this is normal attack and special attack. No shit! Yeah. The wolf gauge decreases as he uses back dashes, jumps, and special attacks in wolf form. Well, yeah, you know, we, we just had Impact. Yeah, Valkenhein. When the wolf gauge reaches zero in wolf form, he is forcibly transformed back to human form. Okay, when this happens, the gauge turns red and he can't transform until it reaches max. Or use D-attacks. Okay, so you can also manually transform back and not need, uh, to wait for the whole, full thing, yeah. A non-red wolf gauge recalls while in human form on the ground. Okay, so only on the ground, okay. When it runs low, remember to transform back into human form before it reaches zero. Transform into a wolf in attack, okay. Um... Heh, wha- what is it? Wha- Become wolf! It's only more backwards jumping as well. I didn't realize it has a little ribbon! There's a little ribbon on the tail! That's so cute! That's so cute! Endless Wolf! Heh, oh boy, they re- We have not, we've had some good names to stream, eh? Raid length increases recovery speed, yeah. Uh, the wolf gauge also recalls while in wolf form, okay. Yeah, it will still be returned if it goes zero. During overdrive, you can use jump attacks immediately after high-speed move like... Geschwund Wolf? No! Yeah, it can't be called Geschwund Wolf! No, that's Rasen Wolf! Heh heh heh! What the fuck? No! Oh, that's... Oh, I forgot to become a wolf. Oh, you can't go into the overdrive as a wolf, you need to do it as human and then... Huh! Okay, okay, that's interesting. I can't get over the fact that it's called fucking Endless Wolf. That's so funny. I, I'm a big fan of the, uh... Tail, like bow, that's so cute. Valkenheim. Ahil! It's fucking called Ahil sing! Ah! Yeah, he, he turns into a wolf! Oh my god, it was... Okay, so Valkenheim needs to go down here. We don't want Impact font, uh, we want... Uh... There we go. Valken Ein Aus. Werewolf. Cannot block, yes, um... Endless Wolf, isn't that, it's really called Endless Wolf! Um... The OD cannot can be in human form but doesn't grant any buffs to the human form. It's like kind of interesting that you need to be human to activate the overdrive, but it does not help the human form in any way. I find that like actually kind of weirdly like fascinating as a back and forth timer thing. Hi Platinum! I know about this character. Thank you Lost Cody. Also just me reading about this community cuz this is this game... This is this game's random item character. But it has the randomization in a very interesting place. Um, I watched a great essay, uh, at one point, I think from Game Maker's Toolkit, uh, or another channel like that, about randomiza- random, uh, numbers in video games, where there can be two kind of random gen- where it can either be, uh, on the outcome, right? You shoot an alien in XCOM and it dies. Um... And it may die, right, does 90% chance. Or it can be in the setup. Um, the game he used there is called, um... Oh, what's it called? I love this game, uh, so I'm gonna shield it for a bit, um... Library. I don't even have it installed. It's a really good game, uh, so I think it's worth pulling out. Yeah, Into the Breach. Um, where the randomization is the aliens' movement, it's like... Uh, essentially, if we stick with the XCOM example, it's how the aliens move. Right, so it's like boy, in randomness in the problem we have to deal with. Faust, it's the outcome, right? You throw an item and then you see what it is. Platinum knows what the item is. There's like a gauge that shows, "Oh, we get a pen next." Over there, right, "We get a pen next." So... You know what you're throwing, but you don't know like what's after that, so you ca- It's like, okay, this tool is for you, but you don't know what that tool will be until you are presented with it. And I actually think it's very interesting. I love that it's called magical weapons. Yeah, the next science shows the next magical weapon that will be equipped. Okay. Oh, it won't appear until all eight have been used, okay, that's interesting. Equipment using magic weapon is done with D, each weapon has specific number of users, and when this reaches zero, you won't have weapon equipped anymore. If you use the distortion drive, miracle gene! Your magical weapon become more, the more powerful special magic weapon. Okay, check out Stragulation or Challenge Mode, you can test them freely for yourself. Okay! That attacks behind? Just less random items, it's more like random abilities. Boom! Boom! So that's a trap? Huh! That's interesting! Magical hardcards, the use limits of magical weapons no longer apply. Any equipped match can use its attack up to three times in a row. Okay, using Mystic Mole will consume it. Okay. That's interesting! Okay! I need to turn down a, um, curtain, cuz I'm getting blinded by the sun, B R B. Huh! I like that it's like... An extra addition to the moveset. Okay, that's, that's interesting. That is an interesting twist. That I hadn't like considered, actually. Platinum the Trinity, is she one of the six heroes? Sorry. What is Walla Moon? That's wild. Oh! So this is like a special move that uses the different... Items. So, hi Havi, I am learning Blaze Blue, uh... But like in a different way. I'm learning Blaze Blue playing Ashriel. Uh, and he's the character that I'm going for. But, I am a commentator. I commentate mainly Strive and, uh, MultiBot, but I real like Blaze Blue and, um... We are, at Salty EU, we are going to be holding some Blaze Blue tournaments, and I have also kind of been Shanghai for Enigma's Blazing Point. Um, so currently I am just going through all the characters and figuring out their drives, so I have like an idea of what they do. Uh, so that I at least know all the characters' drives, and then I'll go through and learn all the characters' special moves. Um, not all today, so... I'm like kind of slowly learning the surface level of the game, so that I... I'm not gonna be entirely lost as what a character can do. Um... It's like a... Yeah, no! Um... Welcome Dave. Yeah, I can recommend this Salty EU community. I am very biased cuz I am a, I guess... Insert like member there? Yeah, no, totally get that you started with BB. That's, that's why, Dave, you are incredibly biased there. Uh, JustDave runs the Strive Beginners Tournament, the MultiBot Tournament, and the Blaze Blue Tournament. Uh, he is a... Very important member for community, um... Yeah. So yeah, I, I think you should. I'm gonna be commentating that Blaze Blue thing, so... Um... So yeah, tha- that's, uh, that's why I'm doing this, so that I have an idea. You've... I hope you will, Dave! Uh... Okay. Actually, I'm up for that, Dave. I'm just gonna finish looking at Platinum here. Um... And then, yeah, cuz currently I'm just like running the drives, uh, and getting a feel of everything. She's, no, she's not Faust, cuz she doesn't yeet items. It's like a random move added to her moveset that's very interesting. Uh, which I kind of love. Okay, Platinum goes here. I can agree with you on that, Dave. Platinum the Trinity! Oh, oh, Dave, you will like this joke. Dave, no, why is she the Trinity? Magical Symphony? Wh- why? Why does... Why does she... Why does she have multiple personalities? That's wild as fuck! But... Jesus Christ, English is weird, uh... Overdrive. Um... Magical Hard Catch. Actually, Dave, I will just look how many drives I have left, cuz... I might actually have to just go in hard on this, um... Self. But I might actually be up for some random gaming. Dave, so I have a fucking clue what's going on? Okay, we're halfway through? Okay, we're halfway through, that's fine. So, Dave, I understand that. I understand why getting the general gameplay may be more beneficial, but... I will, so, I will understand that the moment I have watched them kind of once. Um... And getting a general gameplay will take me a while. That is going to be a lot of work to do. So I think it's better for me to just understand what the character can do. Um... Rather than, um, trying to figure out what their goal is, because... If I kind of heavy look and know what they can do, I can kind of let that gameplay simmer in the back of my head And have that come out, um... But again, if... If I'm watching a match with Nine and I don't know how Nine works, I'm not going to be able to commentate that. Um... So, it's more... Understanding the drive, I feel, is the... Quickest way I can use to understand what is unique about this character. Um... I think that's the best way I can explain it. Um, I'm not entirely sure if it's a good idea, um... But I think it's the best idea I have. So... Dave... Do you have a room? Cuz I'm up for some random select gaming. I have a message here, uh... Okay, can I just... Uh, yeah, yeah, totally, we can get on voice. So... We can actually have this talk on voice, yeah. Okay, I need to turn down Blaze Blue a bit. Hello, JustDave from JustDaveNot.com.
You're fucking wrong. You're not a pro player, so you will never be able to do insightful commentary. How dare you?
We just had a whole thing about how that's not necessary.
Yes, it is.
She's goddamn idiots out here. Uh, yes, accept invitation.
I've been mad about that fucking tweet the whole week. I have a borderline video essay at this point, just already... By the way, uh, Nine fucked the cat.
Yeah. What? What? Uh, okay! Uh... That's even weird, but good, good on her.
No, that's like the, the, the big, the big meme.
It d-
Look, okay, look, the picture on the, on the walls is, uh, Nine and Dubai on there. That's their, that's their wedding night.
Oh! You, you have done some serious redecorations since I was last in here.
I replaced the one table in the middle with another table and put in the Nine fucked the cat picture.
That's-
Alright, random, random Mai, alright, game lost me.
Where is random?
Uh, over the numbers.
Oh, okay. No eleven! Sweet, that's the one of the numbers that I haven't played yet.
Lambda is interesting.
Oh yeah, that's Lambda. Excellent. So yeah, the reason I've been going in on drives is just so, like, it kind of is to me a... A like summarization of what that character kind of wants to do, but also-
It feels kind of arbitrary, because for example, Mai, right? Like, her drive is clearly, uh, pointing towards a range plan, But what she does is like, uh, actually dominate neutral with, uh...
Yeah, with that. So like, the reason I'm doing it is essentially, it's the first thing in the tutorial, and it's a start. Uh...
Yo, footies?
No. Okay, good.
No footies? No, but like Mai, no, 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 it's not with the spear, it's with the, uh, with the, um... Quick series.
Oh, her reka? Or... Or string?
Yeah, yeah, she gets like, uh, really good strings. Like, she has a special cancel, uh, system.
Oh, okay, yeah.
No, bad news.
Ah, it's so nice to just hold down everything.
I love Mai so much. She does not require me to think.
Yeah, I see that.
Wait, the overhead was out of B stance.
Yes!
Ah, there's the back, uh, the overhead.
Very Hilda.
Very, very Hilda. Right, dude?
No. It... This is projectiles, Dave. But yeah, no, kind of what I do is that I just like, you doing the like... I now know the drive and overdrive, now I like try and test out the buttons a bit, just so I have... The slightest idea of what's going on.
It just feels like, uh, uh... That's like, for me, that's like starting with, uh, the supers in Street Fighter.
I kind of get that. I would compare to starting with the V system.
Kind of, yeah, like, but specifically with the V triggers.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, and I kind of agree. The reason I... I want this, I just wanted something arbitrary and quick I can do to like get a taste of each character.
Reasonable, but there is specifically the tactics section that is like a, a very condensed game plan for each character That takes about the same time as the overdrive section, but I think is more informative.
The problem is, I will not be able to remember that.
Ugh. Now I have to play new, uh, Lambda? Fuck me.
No, no, that's not Lambda, that's Mu, that's Nu.
Is that Nu? Nu, Nu 13? Wait, Nu is the fast, I don't remember what all-
No, she has swords as well. Uh, and her drive makes it so that's more swords. Just spam deer and I think you'll be fine.
Yeah, that seems reasonable.
I just saw a nasty Twitter clip with Tarumi and that's all I know.
Time to get Tarumi. Tarumi basically builds meter off of his drive and then dumps it all. Like, he's literally, he's literally a Marvel character.
Oh, that sounds fun. Yes! Quarter circle forward, quarter circle forward, deer is a super. We in here.
I do not like Nu.
Yeah. Her movement feels kind of weird, uh...
The way her projectiles do as well, I don't know.
They have a-
I like the quarter circle shit.
Yeah. I really kind of enjoyed it, but I think it's very, you kind of need to know what the fuck you're doing with her. I feel like it's like that with a lot of Sonos.
Meanwhile, the fucking monkey's just coming out of the play.
Yeah, Dave, that, that is how I play video games.
Do I have a DP? I don't have a DP.
Dave, you're Sona. Why would you have a DP?
Why wouldn't I have a DP?
Yeah. Ashriel has one, so I don't know, I'm just happy.
Grappler with a DP.
I don't know why he has it, but I'm so happy he does. Like, he shouldn't have it, and he does, and it's so beautiful.
It's pretty funny. It's same with, it's the same with Kuma, right?
Yeah. That's my new favorite-
Oh, you have a DP!
What?
That looks like a DP to me.
Okay, yeah.
Not a true DP, I guess.
Yeah. Okay. That's a hundred meter, okay, that's... Oh, that's low, okay. Oh, we dead.
Oh, I'm the best at this video game! I'm so good, oh my god! Two A, two A, five B, five C. Start mashing drive- Start mashing drive again.
That's how we fucking do it.
Oh, man. Let me grab my tier roll quick, I'll do it.
That is fine, that is respectable.
Hurry up, you coward!
What the fuck, okay? Oh, yeah, gimme.
I've been interested in SII.
Okay, yeah, I have no clue what or what she is.
I think she has two stances.
That sounds cool. Ragnar has a DP that's also a reka.
Yep, Ragnar is actually crazy.
Yep.
Alright.
He also has gunflame.
Ragnar is just soul, but cooler.
I don't know, I kinda disagree with that, I love souls so much. There we go. Man, it really helps when you know the special moves.
Alright, I think I need, there we go, I need to build my bar. There we go, and then I can consume... Oh, there's a character that looks like me.
Mesh DP.
He just fucking DP, he just fucking DP!
I was minus, so I DP'd. Dave, you know me at this point!
Us.
I forgot to follow up with the dash. There we go. Yeah, we didn't get to drain all the Hades. Aw! Yeah, that's not in wall. I forgot to wake up. That was the worst.
Alright, alright, alright! Best Azari in, in, in Europe?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think my drive is literally just stunstun range?
That would make sense. Yeah, no, this game's wake up option, like, the fact that you have to like, always confirm that you wanna wake up is real weird to me.
He is so fucking stupid, Jesus Christ, oh! Okay, no, nevermind.
Give me your health! Ah, got me, damn.
I don't like his, uh, his, alright, so, drive is neutral, and I think if I do a special input with it, I can consume one of the bars on the bottom, to turn it into an enhanced special.
That sounds right.
No, I'm not playing Nu again, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Okay?
Said I'm not playing Nu again! Fucking game!
I can't even cancel, that's funny.
Funny, 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 alright. You ready to play some top team?
Yes. I have no clue what she does.
Nice, she presses DP, DPB, uh, then she gets ripcage, and then you can't hit her anymore.
Oh, sweet. Yeah, I saw you testing her out.
Yeah, there we go, now I can't hit you anymore, now I gotta block.
Block, Dave! I am a triangle, fear me!
So when you have triangle activated, you get a projectile, but you can't block anymore?
Hmm...
Uh, your barrier is back, you can ripcage again, exactly.
Okay, so it's a barrier thing, okay.
No. I'm so good at this game!
You are the best. I liked that my, my boss just was like, danger, danger! What the fuck? I'm flying?
Yep.
Haha! That's the first throw I've hit in a match.
Brought to you by ripcage.
Ripcages are pretty puck, TBH. I was painting one the other day, uh...
Just stay there.
Haha!
Fuck.
I am pressing buttons and I'm hoping something happens. Okay, something happened, but it wasn't good. That's a... Big ouch.
Oh yeah, like any wake, uh, like any top team, she's really, really hard to maneuver at first.
Yeah, yeah. Noel, she has guns!
Oh, Subaki, okay, wait, I hope...
Yeah, she has EX moves. Gora actually was with me when I looked at Subaki earlier, yeah. Last time I did it, I was fucking great.
Subaki is another one that's interesting to me, I think I charge with my neutral drive, right?
Yep. Yep, drive is charge, and then you can spend those drives on, um, uh, D versions of moves, which is just EX moves essentially.
Nice.
I think one of them is quarter circle forward, C and D. Oh, baby!
Completely disjointed, by the way. Oh, there it is, oh!
Look, I used that, uh, dead angle thing!
Dude, I have no idea how to get in on this character, can I do this on the ground too? Uh, I kinda can.
I tried to DP like I was playing Ashril.
I'm gonna fucking die!
That's a counter super, no! I was so heavy that I got a super, but no! Yes! But, easy combo, Noel!
Fucking Noel! Fucking Noel!
James was right!
Dude, you just mash drive and you win, that's great.
Oh, I was pressing, my BPM there was so high. Man, I, who, I have not, my brain hasn't been working that fast ever before. And all it was, was mesh. Guess we're getting... Nu, yes. Oh, that's the attack on Titan twink!
Hey, I'm playing Ratchet!
Everyone has just been calling, pick the attack on Titan twink, and I was like, what?
It's not wrong, it's not wrong.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, that's a good fucking call off. Man, I really enjoy these kinds of characters.
Just you wait until I find the actual move that I'm looking for.
Uh-huh.
Just you wait.
Aw, man, zoning is fun!
Zoning is great.
Oh, godfucking bait! I assumed that wasn't deliberate, but...
No, no, that wasn't.
Also, holy shit, that character's sword attack on Titan, like, what the fuck?
So fucking fast!
Ah, damn, I was trying to get the super out, but couldn't.
No.
Good shit. Oh, I'm gonna need to learn to learn one of these number tummies. Those EX Noels.
EX Noel?
They're apparently Noel who got fucked up.
Yep, yep, yep. Not wrong, not wrong.
Yes! Hi, Dave!
Hello.
Where can I have fun? Ahhh! Who the fuck are you playing? Why is he hot?
Playing Kagura. He's great. He's a charge character with a giant seal, uh, shield, uh, sword.
Oh, oh, I know you, how much you love charge characters.
I adore them.
Uh, wake up command grab didn't work. Cause of course I was going for it. Oh? Hi, Dave.
Nice. Hello. Wake up tech will, the classic.
Yeah. That's, I discovered a super, we were using it! He has lighthead?
What are my supers?
Don't know, but that is mine. Iron fisto!
I wish I knew what my super was.
Yeah, no, I get that, I was lucky to discover it by mashing a special. I think it's double quarter circle forward B, but I'm not entirely sure.
I tried, I tried.
No, no, untaker.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's possible. Yeah. I have no even clue.
Oh, Jin! Sweet!
Can I fucking cancel these selections, I swear to god?
Apparently not, that's hilarious. I, I, on one hand, like that random doesn't let you bail out of it, on the other hand, it's kind of awkward.
I don't wanna keep playing Lambda, eh?
You don't even get me who has like cannons and shit. Who is the best Zoner?
I wish if Jin didn't have the personality of a fucking rat.
I don't know any lore, oh, except that Ashril is... I don't know any lore. Oh, except that Ashril is the most powerful being in the entire universe.
Ashril's lore is literally just fight me.
Yeah. That's really cool.
I wish I... Fucking, my god! God, a character I actually enjoy.
Yeah. Yeah, not everyone can be the fucking sigma male like me who just like can enjoy everything.
I do enjoy zoning, but like moo...
Yeah, that's not...
Feels very weird.
The kind of zoning you enjoy.
No. Back to full screen.
No. I'm not going back to full screen, I will die instead.
Back to full screen.
Why does...
Why do you have fucking combos, what the fuck?
Dave, Dave, I don't have combos, I have mashing. But I will take them.
Why? Why do you keep mashing?
Dave, I am playing random select. Of course I'm mashing!
Yeah, I know! Don't you wanna figure out how the character works?
That's what I'm doing.
No, you're mashing!
No, we are making mistake. This is how you learn to play jazz, Dave.
Though, you learn jazz by mastering everything and then putting it together on intuition.
Dave, which one of us can play jazz?
I can't because I didn't master music.
I can't, cause I didn't master music!
We have very op- uh, opposite approaches to mastery.
Yeah, I'm not... I... My goal is never mastery.
Sad.
It's competency. It's understanding. I, I know I'm not going to be a master of anything, but I can work to understand it. Oh, this is quick time event squirrel girl, oh no! Have fun Dave!
Bleh! He only made me... He only made me play him, I know that he's like a negative... I think he's negative edge, right?
Yeah, I didn't... So, holding down D lets you move Nirvana, releasing D while holding a direction makes her attack.
Alright, okay, let's see if we can get a JoJo setup.
No, you can't. Uh, uh, it's incredibly hard. I am doing fucking Neo Tof Golf here. I have like quick time events on my buttons.
I like this button. Alright Nirvana, listen up! Fucking move your ass!
I love the call... Your call is just solo call!
Alright, okay, Nirvana is broken, please stand by, she's in the, uh, she's in the fucking shop right now.
Hi! What the fu-
Nirvana, listen to me! She's like twitching in the back!
I got what's described as a beginner rushdown character. Oh boy! Dave, you're so fucked!
Yo, big nasa powers? No, stop low... Oh no.
Stop Dave!
Do you suddenly have claws?
I remembered that she has 214 ABC! This is why we look through the wikis and stuff for the characters, cause I don't just look at the drives. Haha, that's my secret. Yes! We got a combo! What? What? Why didn't anything cool happen?
Nirvana fucking sucks.
She's not nearly as cool as Eddie.
Nason! Nason! Oh shit! Why do I keep getting the shitty complicated character? Meanwhile Jake keeps getting the fucking mouth breathing glue eaters! Bruh!
They are Genosas! Oh Kokonoe! Why does she have a big bill... Well, right on her genitals.
I don't know, but knife fuck the cat.
I just, okay, I loved the fucking art of Ashril in the wedding dress, that is my shit. It's so good.
That's good, that's good, that's good.
I didn't realize it was official art.
No it is!
Oh, I like Kokonoe now. She can wield... Why do I have class?
Like, wait, 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 stop, 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 stop. Look at her blocking animation.
Oh!
Look at her, look at her dash, look at her dash.
Kokonoe is based!
I fucking love Noel! Fucking mashd!
You see these fucking precious strengths, Dave? You see how fucking based I am?
Wait, what, what's my shotgun again? I wanna finish you with the shotgun.
Ha 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 ha!
I wanted to finish you with the shotgun!
No angel with a shotgun for you, Dave.
Angel with a shotgun?
Aw, that song is so... What the fuck is this character? Kokonoe is the wildest thing I have ever seen!
She was incredibly broken as well on the...
She just has fucking like hammer space!
Bruh.
Yeah, I feel like if you know what you're doing here, you can do some really nasty smokes. Hi Dave.
Oh. Oh, you just fucking mashed ABC, ABCD, huh?
No, I held it down. See, it works? Okay, that's cool. Damn! That's a big gun!
That did no fucking damage.
I have no clue what's happening! Get a super! Oh, I have a plane. Oh! No! My reflex cancel didn't work. How do I do her gamory super? Drop the inputs. Wait, is Dave dead? No, Dave is not dead, god.
No, Dave is trying to concentrate!
Please refrain from spamming symbols, I'm so sorry! Uh, 64641236. What the fuck? What is that? What's the fuck's that input?
Turn up, turn up!
No, no, 6464. Forward, back, forward, back, 12... Jesus Christ. We're fucking trying to go for it then. Oh, he found the shotgun! Okay, stronger and overlife, okay, good. Okay, we couldn't get it.
Oh, we found the shotgun, it's over boys, it's over!
I, I tried to go for it then, yeah. I tried. Tried.
No fun allowed, only shotgun.
Dave fucked this shoty! These fucking Swiss people and their guns.
Bruh. I don't get to have one in real life, I need to use one in the li- uh, in the game.
Now what do we get?
Oh fuck, it's Jin.
What?
Oh, Rellius though? Rellius is cool. Rellius is literally just, uh, like heritage for the future character.
Oh! Sweet. So broken, god.
Like his drive is literally just a stand button.
Oh, that's rad. Well, I guess, uh... Snowtown? What? Yes, gimme! I love thi- this stage is my shit!
Alright, what's the neutral button here?
Hi Dave.
Nope. He can run up and throw me by the way. I cannot... Oh shit, is your baby dead? Bruh, Rellius, no, stop it.
No! Rellius the easier call, yeah. Rellius is call when he knows how to use the fucking thing.
What's hair card? There it is.
What the... Why does he have hair card? That's fucked up! Okay, I love... These jump buttons are so bike and I kinda love it. Oh, that's an overhead?
That's base! Apparently! That's fucked up. Oh man, I love Jin. If the character didn't annoy me, I would play the shit out of Jin.
Yeah, I know. It's so important for the characters like have a personality that you like.
Yeah, yeah.
That's like my only downside of lore and Street Fighter V. Oh, this fuck!
I get a second chance at Sibaki.
Dave, I am about to ruin your fucking day.
Oh, no, 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 I've, I've played against Darkhaka, I'll just hold them back until your drive runs out.
Okay, that, that is good. I wasn't thinking about the drive, but yes.
Why do you not press?
Dave, why would I press buttons? That, that doesn't seem like something a fighting gameplay player would do.
Listen the fuck up, you smartass. You've been mashing this whole evening?
It is early in the afternoon, um... But yes.
I thought Sibaki had a fucking projectile?
Probably. Oh, I think her projectile is herself.
Fuck, it's the lamest kind of projectile. Ah, well, didn't give long time. That's dead.
Save my dude, Sam. I need to figure out what his supers are. You can't smix this mix, cause I don't know what this mix is. Oh, sweet! Yes! No! Dammit!
Found the projectile. Found the projectile, alright.
That's good shit.
It's over, it's over.
The moment you discover the projectile or the shotgun. You know, it's...
It's actually over, alright.
Okay, okay. Gimme... Oh, this fuck!
You top tier though?
Yeah, yeah, this is a... Uh, I know Suzano has weird levels that I need to consider, but I'm just... I don't know how to use the special move, so it doesn't matter. So I'm just gonna kill you. What, he's being introduced by someone? That's dank! He has a manager! Wait, no-
No, he is the manager.
Is it a fusion?
Yes.
Oh, yep, we got the special move!
Bye.
I'm gonna stomp you! Why did that end here? Dave!
Fucking hate that you keep getting these gorillas.
Dave, no, I turn everyone into a gorilla.
Yeah, that's true.
I play X like a fucking gorilla.
Where the fuck... Is the move that I'm looking for?
Okay, I unlock special with D, six piece plus farm block. Mitch, you are... You are exactly what I need, thank you. Dave, you're dead now.
Alright.
Breakable defense! Yes!
Stop pressing!
Dave, you know me! That's not gonna happen! Okay, JB, see, it's nice to have a coach, thank you Mitch. See, now I got this.
Shut up Mitch! You know that I have gun flame too?
That's fucked up. You don't even have a gun to flame? Okay Mitch, I need super input right about now.
That's so funny! That's my body!
Yes! Yes! I'm the best! The best! The best! The best! The best!
I won this mentally. I won this mentally.
Okay. If you spam, if you put in inputs, please add over text. Eh, I'm protecting myself from asky dongs.
Stop spamming symbols Mitch, I'm about to time you out.
We already timed him out!
I'll time you out more.
Oh yeah, by the way, yesterday I was doing instrument maitens and my younger sibling just came in, claimed uh "time me out" and left. Oh, sweet! Hi Dave!
Time.
Mitch, I cannot tell you how little the sentence "the other super needs you to unlock Blade of Judgment" Means to me, but I love it. Yeah, no, yeah, yeah. I need to work on the uh... I haven't had this problem before. Oh, that's okay!
They're about to kiss!
Kiss!
Kiss! Kiss, kiss, kiss!
Aw.
Damn. Alright, check this shit out.
Whoever loses has to bottom. Oh! Ah, he stopped! Give him to me! Nope!
Ah, damn. Dammit, that was supposed to be an high AD.
Fuzis?
Yo, Fuzis? 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 This is like uh Ken's jumping medium kick.
Oh, good throw. No! I want health! Okay.
Dammit! Dammit, what the Dave doing? I am the premium gorilla! I get the top, fuck you.
No! The only Destiny Wars on death.
Getting topped by me.
Oh, this character!
No!
Hi Dave! You're gonna fucking die!
Oh, I hit my table and my fight stick disconnected, so I had the window sound too. It was prime comedy, I swear.
Oh...
Oh, Nathan! Harlins kinda fast.
Yeah. That's just Miyako. Oh my god!
Well, uh, solo Carl is top tier, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, beat Li- if you can beat Lychee, that's top tier material.
Oh! I found a move that is trash! Oh, is that air only? It is. Can I TK though?
Oh.
Dammit Nathan, dammit Nathan.
6B is porg. I found my fuzi button. Oh my god, you're so small!
Showed us supremacy!
That's the fucking wildest sentence I have ever heard in my life, Dave. No, I didn't get you with the overdrive! I had the big stick! He fucking won with Carl?
Get the ream! Get the ream, the best fast play player on the planet! Who wins? Nine with a counten?
Yeah, what the fu- I love that she's holding... Hi Dave!
Hello!
Okay. I got this.
No, you have no chance.
I love to bring off that death title with a platinum. That's-
That's true, that's true. Alright, which voice will be kinda good?
This game has a lot of puppet characters, eh?
Yeah, but she doesn't use the puppet. You wanna see the best 2A in the game?
Yeah. Okay, that's kind of based. Oh, I thought that super would do something, but no, that's the one with buffs for items. I just got so much hope when they-
Let me heal you, let me heal you.
Okay, that's really sweet!
Her uh instant kill? It's basically her healing you to full and then killing you. And then the puppet comes in and kills you. Bong. Bong.
Go to horny jail!
Have you seen her uh counter yet?
Uh, platinums?
Yeah.
No, I don't think I have. Bonk! Go to horny jail! Hahahaha! What a douche noodle! Stop it! Hey, I feel like I need to block that. Okay, there we go.
Easy, easy. This game is simple, guys.
It's so easy, you just kill.
Just works, it just works.
I really love that your nine has two guns. That's so fucking funny.
Nine with a gun. Nine with two guns, actually. I wanted to give her a shotgun.
Hi Dave!
Aw. Why do you keep running?
I don't know why! Just, Jacob learned this character, goddammit. Like, my only critique of this game is that the female characters are wearing too much clothes and the male are wearing... No, female are wearing too little, men are wearing too much.
Yeah.
6B is incredibly based. Uh, press D again.
Yeah, yeah, I know, but I've been trying to look for the Rakkas series she has in uh God Hand.
Yeah, I don't know about that.
What is the Rakkas series she has? There it is.
Catch this. No, lost that. Oh, that overhead!
Uh, Lychee.
I got 6B instead of 5B. The fucking IB timing in this game is so fucking generous. It's kind of wild, and I get why it's only tuned uh Strive now. Oh, that's interesting. And I'm dead. GG's Dave.
Oh, I learned from the past, baby! Alright, got time for one more game. After that, I wanna take a break. You wanna, you wanna do Azrael versus Nine?
Yeah, let's do that.
I'd beat the shit out of me, dad.
I will. I will find you and I will murder you.
Perfect, perfect.
Good. And then I'm gonna keep going on with the drives and learning characters cuz...
Reasonable.
I want that and then I will start filling in with specials and strategy cuz... That's a lot. Hi. There's so much fucking shit happening.
He just lets a bow!
Yeah. I do. Oh no! I got the wrong input, fuck!
Oh!
I wanted to super. Okay, we need to take this a little less seriously. Dave, I'm just gonna ruin you now. No, okay, yeah.
Alright, 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 alright.
Those buttons have links. Damn!
It's so dumb, right? It's so dumb!
Yeah, holy shit, she's wild. I need to figure out how to get in on you.
He's a r- she's really incredible.
Yeah, no, totally. Damn, she is. She's a wild one.
I'm starting to get better with getting the spells I want as well, like uh mix up uh fairy and kunzite.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So you can get the okan stuff.
Yeah, exactly. So technically, what you're supposed to do, right? Is you start with 4A. You do a knockdown in the kunzite, which gives you a prop up. You pick it up with 6B. Then you can go to the air, uh to two waters and get an air freeze. The air freeze allows you to get down to the ground, set up a uh three stock spell that you want. Still get hard knockdown. And then you basically either get meteor or um... Or a fairy for oki?
Hmm, yeah.
That's like the basic combo theory for her.
Okay, okay. That's, that sounds uh... No, that sounds good, that sounds good.
It's nice, it's nice, it's neat. And meanwhile, I mean, you've seen, you've seen the space control you can get. What I'm also starting to get into is like her dashes, because they're teleports, but you can do like uh... Vertical teleports too, like so far I've only been horizontally teleporting. But you can do uh... Vertical teleports too, so for example, I can do uh backdash downwards or forward dash downwards. To like suddenly be in your face instead of above you.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Cuz she can like kind of chain them together, right?
Yeah, yeah, so you can always chain two together and then you have a little cooldown.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, it's nice, it's neat.
It's good.
I like Nine a lot and she is definitely a character that I should be playing.
That sounds very good. Always Dave, you are always welcome here at the Jaxxend streaming emporium.
Perfect. Twitter.com slash justdaveu. Also watch Salt Mine tonight and the 10v10 over in Orochi stream.
Yeah, let's just give a quick... We have that active, right? Bam! I'm such a pro streamer.
Yoohoo!
So good. Take care, my friend.
Thank you, take care, bye.
Love you. Love you. Let's look at Reilius. So, we played him earlier. Very aggressive puppet character. Puppet is called Ignis, uh, I was reading a bit while Dave was talking, cuz I'm the kind of asshole I am. Detonator! Pressing D button will summon recall Ignis, while summoned. Uh, move, like, directions on D will come into attack. Down D while summoned is an attack command, so be aware you cannot recall her with this. Okay. Okay, yeah, yeah. Ignis, so you need to be neutral, Dave, to do that. Ignis is just damn... Goddamn it, Dave! The Ignis gauge above the heat gauge serves as a timer, gradually increasing while Ignis is summoned. Uh, increased by a large amount whenever Ignis is active, yeah. When the Ignis gauge is depleted, the Ignis will shut down, become inoperable. While shut down, the Ignis gauge will gradually recover, and she can be used once again when... Yeah. So it's like, if you manually re-summon her, it goes faster, yeah, yeah. Um... Oh, if Reilius or Ignis is hit, uh, she will be forcibly recalled. Um... And the gauge will turn blue, yeah, so... If she gets hit, she won't be able to come out for a little bit. Oh, that's a goddamn button! Yeah, those are some good buttons. Overdrive, maximum dance. Okay, decreases the rate. Uh, as far as I understand, Mithio, it will be on a bi-weekly scale, so... Melty one week, BBCF the next, until beta is done at least. But I, I don't know much about that. It'll be also depending on how many players show up for the different things. Um... Okay, so while overdrive, Ignis will be put out. Oh, and her attacks are even better, so more hits done. Okay. Okay, that makes sense. Uh... Next, yeah. Overdrive, maximum... Dance. Maximum dance, not maximum. Gauge, always recover... And... Ignis, more powerful. Yeah, that... Like, there's no reason to go in D button, that. Uh, I don't need a... Wait, shop bookmark bar? You have that on for reasons. Um, good. That was Reilius. Isayo! Okay. Drive, built is called Scarlet. Pressing D button switches between normal mode and gain art mode. During gain art mode, she attacks probably change and is possible to use D version special attacks, okay. Just one zero type gauge, that's the thing above her he meter. Zero type gauge is gained by hitting with special attacks in normal mode, okay. During gain art mode, her various dash moves float directly upwards. Even the ground dash... Will become jump attacks, okay... Oh, so she can like, kind of become Eno? Okay, so she like, has to have a meter to become Eno. Okay. Freedom justice, okay, it fills overtime. Oh yeah, three-way to five-way. Okay, that's, that's interesting, okay! Just this, I go. I feel like just let her become Eno is a fine way to describe it for me. Sayo... Drive Scarlet, justice. Special, zero... With gauge. Needs... These stocks to perform special attack. Uh... Yeah. Band surf. In art, good. Overdrive, this was just gain more. Justice. All zero we've put doesn't know, uh... Dash between them. Um... Just add that detail, good, good, good. I think we might be able to get through everyone. So I don't have Junpay, but I actually had, um, Jacobbin slash James make a... Very simple... Like, essentially do it for me, which was sweet. No, I didn't make it, he just did and posted in my Discord. Drive button is called Spiral. The D button performs drill like motor stage attacks. Through all D, you can continue to attack for time. Uh, you're certain damage to single heads from the various D attacks low, however, it deals a great amount of chip damage when guarding, yeah. Heading deep with an attack... Heading with a D attack increases the spiral gauge above the heat gauge. Spiral gauge goes up to level 3, and the attack count and chip damage growth is still increases. Okay, the spiral gauge gradually decreases over time, so you need to keep on it. Uh, it will overheat, so be careful not to overuse it. That's interesting, that's a lot of chip damage. Okay, that seems pretty simple. Gonna turn up... The blast blue just a little bit. Just so that I don't fall asleep. Drive Spiral. Alright, it's just called the Drill Gauge. The Spiral Gauge. Oh, Steve. Yeah, hiss. Yeah. I, I am writing hiss? I am a wealthy pronouns. I have gotten hit with that mix before. Yeah, don't, don't you worry, I, I am... Experienced. Uh, yeah, that's Cyclone. Excellent, that, that's about it. Uh, we, we're with our money. Bullet! As guns? Lock on, she searches for the opponent's position and performs a high-speed rush attack. Pressing D button will make a circle appear around Bullet. A lock-on mark will appear on the opponent if they enter the circle. Then she performs a... What?! The circle grows as you hold the D button. You can interrupt the rush attack by either releasing D button before the opponent enters the circle, or by pressing back as she starts moving. Will enter a heated up state when a D attack hits. Heated up has two stages. Just keep in mind that Bullet turns more red during the second stage, uh, okay? While heated up, you can use red cutter engage by pressing D again after D attack hits. Various special attacks also have additional hits in the state. Bullet is immune to projectiles while rushing during a D attack, and if she's heated up regardless of the state, she's completely invulnerable. Damn! We don't like Zonos here. Oh! This C button is... What is this, two C?! Odo, odo! Oh, that's big! Boy! Okay! That, that's just super dash button, thank you for the steps! Hit the beat! A heated up staging response stage. Oh, using special attacks will not move the heated up stage, okay. During overdrive, it is... Yeah, she definitely goes brrr! It's possible to connect numerous additional special attacks again in a combo. Jesus, okay, so... Uh, that's just special cancelling. I will take a break, Seiya, don't you worry. But yes. Okay! Bullet be wilden! Some good mods. Uh... Hybrid rush down grappler weight, oh no! Snap hands fist! *laughs* Ah, I just cannot! 728, 720D! 1080D! Ah! That's so funny! Uh... And she's just actually straight up cold Bullet, okay, that's... Drive... Log on, right, that's... Yeah. Log on. No, that... That buffs. Was, this was beat, hit the... That's so silly! But yeah, it's... Yeah, that seems fine, okay. I think... I should probably call that it here. We've been going for around two hours and I, as Nemo says, need to take care of myself, which is... An important thing you learn as you grow older. But, we did go from... Uh, move to, uh, Bullet. And next time, we're starting with Azrael. And then, we can probably get all the way to Mai. Azrael is my boy, and he's probably the first one who will go dive in deep, uh, when it comes to that. But... That has been it for now from Jake here at the Jakesand Streaming Emporium. Thank you for being here for this place blue study session. This will also go up on my YouTube channel, which you can find over At jakesand.com for all your Jakesand needs. You can find a lot of things there, um... So... If you come by, thank you today for coming on, running some random select battles with me, trying out some weird characters. Um, that was a joy. Thank you Mitch and, uh, Athenia for giving advice and sharing a bit of their expertise. Uh, that always helps. We are here to learn together, that is, you know, kind of... The whole point, um... So, thank you for that, and... This is not all for me today, assuredly, I think, but it is all for me for now, so take care, goodbye, I love you.